Good evening. Welcome to our 2020 Forum Series organized by Florida Today, the League of Women Voters of the Space Coast, and Eastern Florida State College. Tonight, you're going to meet two candidates running for the Brevard County Commission District One. It covers North Brevard, including Cocoa, Port St. John's, Sharps, Titusville, and Mims. There are, like I said, two candidates on the November 3 ballot. I am Isadora Rangel. I will be your host this evening, and I am Florida Today's Engagement Editor. The two candidates on the ballot are the incumbent Republican Rita Pritchett and Democrat Dwight Seigler. Welcome, candidates. Thank you for being here with us.
Thank you.
And my apologies, we had to start a little late this evening because we were having some technical difficulties. But thank you for waiting for us, as we know, for voters to hear from candidates. So I'm going to go over the rules for tonight, and then we're going to begin with opening statements. So each candidate will have a minute and a half to answer my questions. And they also get a 30-second rebuttal, which will only be used if one of the candidates brings up the other candidate. So without further ado, let's begin with our opening statement. And Commissioner Pritchett, why don't you start? You have a minute and a half.
Thank you, ma'am. My name is Rita Pritchett, and I'm running for my second term of county commission up here in District One. And I have lived in Brevard County all but three months of my life. My parents moved over here when I was a baby, and I've been here since. And I love our community. I love people here. I worked through, you know, my education here in this area. I went to Brevard Community College at that time, it's now Eastern Florida State College. I went to the University of Central Florida. I earned my bachelor's in business and my master's in accounting. I have a TPA. I currently was able to start teaching classes at the college. So I teach tax accounting classes there. I am also a member and a staff member at New Life Christian Fellowship, a church here in North Brevard. And I have a wonderful husband. We have children, and we have eight children. And I love our community, and I'm just thankful to have the opportunity to be here and to greet the citizens of Brevard County.
Thank you. So now let's meet Democrat Dwight Seigler. Mrs. Seigler, you have a minute and a half to introduce yourself to voters.
Hello, I'm Dwight Seigler, and thank you all for having me. I'm a disabled Army veteran, and I'm running for Brevard County District One County Commissioner. Because I grew up in unincorporated North Brevard on a dirt road in the East Mims community. I've been on a three-year listening tour in the unincorporated communities of District One. And I've heard their cry about the lack of concern about the COVID-19 from this Board of County Commissioners. I've seen the flooding problems in Scottsmoor as recent as Tuesday. I've seen the flooding problems in West Cocoa, Sharps area. I've heard the people crying, I've heard the gunshots that comes from the Sheriff's firing range out in West Cocoa. It sounds like you're in Iraq in a firefight. These people have been complaining about that for years. And it seems like there's no one listening. In the Scottsmoor area, since the 1998 fires, when everyone had to evacuate that community, here it is 2020, and we still don't have fire hydrants, public drinking water.
I'm going to begin with the COVID-19 pandemic, since that's an issue that already came up in the opening statement. And Mr. Seigler, you brought up, you mentioned what you described as lack of concern about COVID from the current commission. And so I would like to get an assessment from both the candidates of how the county commission has dealt with the COVID-19 pandemic. And Mr. Seigler, you're going first. Again, you have a minute and a half.
I feel like a lot of residents in the county, that this current commission, we haven't heard much of them saying anything about COVID-19. They haven't been giving public updates as far as we're concerned. And, you know, I think it was one of the recent holidays when South Florida and the rest of the state basically closed their beaches. Brevard County couldn't make a decision whether we should have our beaches open or not, so we kept them open. And people flooded here from all over the state just to come to the beaches. No masks. We can't make up our mind to even make a mask mandate. This is a serious problem, and it seems like some people are taking it very lightly from Washington to Brevard County.
All right, Commissioner Pritchett, what are your assessment of how the commission has dealt with the COVID-19 pandemic?
Thank you, Isadora. I want to start with that we have never had to deal with something like this before. And I don't know if everything was done right or done wrong, but I got to say in hindsight, there was probably a few things that could have done better. And maybe there was a few things that was maybe done too strongly. But, you know, all in all, this has been a brand-new item. And it did bring up the question in my mind, are we ready for something like this? And the answer is no, but I don't know if we'll ever be ready for something like this. If it would have been worse, and the death rates would have been even higher than what we've been seeing, you know, it's a terrible thing to happen. How do you prepare for a catastrophe? But all in all, I think people did their very best to manage this, so I think that's a good thing. The county commission did send out a resolution saying that we really want you to wear masks. Please stay six feet away. Please wash your hands. Please be careful when you're around the population that has a higher chance of having a bad infection. So, you know, we're all working together hard as a community, and we've seen that response. Although there wasn't a mandated mask mandate, I said that funny. Although we didn't mandate a mask, people were still wearing their mask. And our infection rates were the same as those places that mandated them. The problem with mandating is you can't enforce it. So I think all in all, we did a pretty good job trying to balance the mental health of people with the virus.
I always tell candidates to unmute themselves, and I just made a mistake. So I'll start over. You brought up the issue with mask mandates. You were among the majority on the commission who voted to reject mandating masks inside of businesses. As I was wondering if you could describe why you took that position, and for Mr. Seigler to describe how you would have voted, but we'll start with Commissioner Pritchett.
Well, we requested that the business would mandate them. Again, it's hard to enforce that once you do it. And I got to tell you, Isadora, too, I wear a mask, and I ask my family to wear a mask. But there's so much conflicting information on whether you should or shouldn't wear a mask. I mean, even the CDC changes its mind all the time. But, you know, if you just wear the mask and you get rid of the risk possibly, I've encouraged everybody to do that. As far as mandating, it's really tough to enforce it. So when you go on mandating items that you can't even enforce, and then you have people that are just mad about mandating and not mandating, but the businesses did the right thing. They did it to go into their stores, which greatly helped the situation that we're in. But again, if you're a high-risk person, please take care of yourself. Wear a mask, stay away from people, wash your hands, and let's keep you healthy.
And Mr. Seigler, the floor is yours. Would you have voted for a mask mandate, and why?
I would have voted for a mask mandate. And first of all, the CDC hasn't been changing its mind back and forth. The CDC is having its hands twisted just to try to make statements to make some people happy. But I would have had a mask mandate, knowing that we can't really enforce it. But more people would just follow it just because it's a mandate. You know, people don't like to wear seatbelts, but it's mandated, so they wear them. So everybody's not going to be wearing it, but the majority of the people would be if you just say, this is what we're going to do, and call it a mandate and deal with it.
So we'll talk about COVID-19 for a few more questions. But now I want to dig a little deeper into the CARES Act. As you know, Brevard County received more than $100 million from Congress through the CARES Act in relief for the COVID-19 pandemic. And among the county's allocations are grants to small businesses and nonprofits, grants for individuals financially hurt by COVID-19, included for rental or mortgage assistance, help for food pantries, food banks, and other entities. My question is, would you change how that money is being distributed? And Mr. Seigler, you're going first.
I think we had some high qualifications, and it scared a lot of people away from even applying for the money. And there's some people on this commission to rather see the people that's in need, get the money, and use the money, spend it in Brevard County, which also helps your economy. There's some people on this commission that would rather send it back than to give it to the people in need.
Thank you, Commissioner Pritchett. And are you one of those commissioners who would like to send the money back? Just to clarify, if you want to incorporate that into your answer.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't want to send it back. I want to get that money into the community. The problem with this funds, well, it's federal funds and not ours. And they gave us direct parameters of what we can do. It has to be COVID-related. So we are trying to get it into many hands as we can, as fast as we can. But they have to follow within that parameter. If they don't, the federal government's going to make them pay it back, and it's going to be terrible. So we've been able to get millions of dollars into the hands of people who need food and housing. That's every time Ian comes in and says, like, I spent it, we're giving it to him as fast as we can. So we are really working hard trying to get this money into the hands of people as quick as we can. We've got till mid-December to have it encumbered. So it's been very aggressive, but we're trying, we're just really trying. If it becomes with any more ideas, we're vetting it, trying to get this money out. But I don't want to send any of it back. All they would do is take it and send it to another state. I would rather have it spent here in Brevard County, because it's our tax dollars, too.
And Commissioner, you voted twice against using money that the county got through the CARES Act to temporarily subsidize jobs for small businesses and nonprofit organizations. Can you explain the reasoning for your decision? And Mr. Seigler, how would you have voted on that item? And Commissioner, you're going to go first.
Ms. Wrangler, I'm sorry. What was the first part of that question?
Sorry, I'll start over. I'm referring to your vote, I believe it was very recent, probably in the past couple of weeks, against using money that the county got through the CARES Act to temporarily subsidize jobs for small businesses and nonprofit organizations. I believe that would be done through, I forgot the name of the organization, Courier-Brevard or Courier Source Brevard. If you could explain your vote, please, and then I'll ask after that whether Mr. Seigler would have voted any different.
Well, I wanted to get the money into people's hands to get them jobs. We were giving it to Courier Source. I think, I don't know the exact number, it was like 2.5 million. They were going to get 700,000 of that just to give to another entity to give people to get jobs. I just thought it would be better just to get it out and give it to the people. Not that I don't like Courier Source. I just had a struggle with giving them 750,000 just to hand over to another entity to find people these jobs. The government's been doing PPP programs, trying to help companies hire individuals back. So I'm hoping they open up the categories on this. So like companies that aren't able to pay their employees that didn't get the PPP are able to use this money as well. The clerk of courts had this problem. He didn't have enough revenues coming in. He had to lay off a lot of his staff, so we gave him $500,000 out of the general fund, hoping that this CARES Act will open up, and we're allowed to give him some of those funds back. The most important thing here is to keep people with some type of income coming into their house until their jobs are able to pick back up, and they have income to feed their families. This is such a tough time.
Mr. Seigler?
Yes, I would have set the money as fast as possible to get it into the hands of the people and into the economy. People are hurting, and we're trying to hold on to it to let Housing and Human Services handle the money. They have a load now that they can't handle, their own business. So if the Courier Source is going to help us get the money, get people back to work, let's do that.
And I don't know if you... I think I'm having a terrible delay right now. Yeah, we're having an issue with, it looks like Mr. Seigler is having a lot of delay, and it looks like we're hearing his voice after we see him speak. So I'm going to proceed and see if this issue fixes itself. So Commissioner Pritchett, I'll ask you to answer the next question first, so maybe we'll give him some time to... Hopefully, that issue will fix itself with a couple of minutes. And it's still about COVID-19 and the CARES Act. Commission Chair Brian Lober asked two healthcare companies seeking CARES Act dollars for COVID-related expenses that they partially matched those funds with money to improve county-owned facilities, one of them in Titusville. Parrish Medical Center is receptive to that idea. However, Health First has accused Commissioner Lober of quid pro quo. Lober has, by the way, withdrawn his request to Health First. My question is, do you believe the county should distribute federal relief money in exchange for investment in county facilities?
I don't know if we're allowed to do that. So I think he was trying to encourage people to invest in projects, which I don't know that the hospitals don't already do that. Do I think the hospitals should get some of these CARES funds? Absolutely. They've lost a lot of money, and they're the ones out there having to treat these patients coming in that are struggling with this illness, and people that are even afraid of having to get tested. And they're not getting as much reimbursement as they're spending. So it's a good place to put the funds. And I don't know a lot with Health First investments to the community. I'm sure it's substantial, but Parrish is continually investing in the community. So for that even to be an idea for them, I knew they would be fine with it if the proposal came. But I don't even know as a commissioner if we're allowed to do it, but that's going to be for legal. But I think that we have wonderful hospitals in our community, and I would feel very good about them getting some of the CARES funds.
And just to quickly follow up, do you think there was perhaps a perception that there was some quid pro quo, even though that might not have been stated in policy, for example?
Yeah, I don't know, Ms. Wrangle. I don't know if that was his intention or anybody's intention. I think that the intention, I don't know, I can't even second-guess it. But I know everybody's hearts, and they've got good hearts. So I think I'll have to leave that to legal down the road.
And Mr. Seigler, I'm going to ask, were you able to hear the question? Or want to make sure that you're having issues listening to hearing us? So the floor is yours to answer that question.
It seems like to me, it seems like Commissioner Lober, when he's been in the chair, he's off doing things, and the rest of the commissioners not really understanding what he's doing. So I believe if we're going to do anything like that, it should be all the commissioners coming together, discussing it, and having a vote on it to decide, along with legal, whether it should, it can, should and can be done.
So let's move on from the pandemic. And my next question is very simple. What overall grade would you give the county commission's effectiveness, and why? And Mr. Seigler, you're going first.
Okay, I would give the Board of County Commissioners a D. And the reason why is because District One County Commissioner, we haven't seen her in the East Mims community in four years. West Cocoa's telling me that they've seen her one time, and they almost had to threaten her to get there. I'm not sure if it's Scottsmoor either once or none. Same thing with Sharps. So we have a county commissioner that, as I walk around and ask people in these different communities, who is the county commissioner, they don't even know. So I feel like the county commissioner's been out of touch since Truman Scarborough left office. So the unincorporated people have the count, unlike the municipalities. And when the commissioners are somewhere doing their other daytime job, and only commissioning when they have the meetings, that's not what I feel like a county commissioner should be doing. I would be having at least Zoom Town Hall meetings at least twice a month to bring the people up to date on what's going on.
And Commissioner, would you mind addressing these allegations that Mr. Seigler made that you're not, that you're absent from parts of the district? If you'd like to incorporate that into your answer?
Well, Ms. Adora, the question again was how you would grade the county commission on the COVID response.
I'm sorry, just how would you grade the county commission overall? Not just on the response to COVID, but just its effectiveness in all different areas?
Okay, I think we're doing great. We have an ability now to really have a lot of discussion. And although we don't always agree on the same outcome, we're learning to compromise on the path to get there, which I think we've had a lot of great progress as far as how to fund things that are good for the community, how to not spend so much money in areas that might not be so necessary to save taxpayer dollars. Again, we don't always get along up there, but there's been an ability for communication. And so I have to tell you, because of that, I think we've done a good job together. I wish they would all vote with me every time, because I think my opinion's the best one. But, you know, I'll take what I can get. But I think the overall effectiveness of this commission has been pretty good. We've got a few moments that absolutely need some work, but I think overall, we've done pretty good. So is there room for improvement? Yes, you know, but overall, I think it's been a good commission. Everybody studies hard. They come in knowing their stuff. Nobody's voting emotionally, pretty much. And so I think we've done a good job getting things done. We've got money established for roads. We're taking care of the lagoon. We're taking care of projects that we've been trying to fund for a long period of time. So I think we've done a good job. As far as the other things, the community calls me all the time. My door's always open. I give my cell phone number out, 321-223-8774. I've met anybody who's called for an appointment, so I don't know if that's true. I can't argue what people just say, but I feel very connected to my community. I love my community.
Okay, so let's move on to the next question, also very simple. What are the biggest issues in District One, and how do you plan to address them? And Commissioner, are you going first?
We're still working real hard on job creation, and we've done a good job over the last, I think, eight years. Robin Fisher came in and developed the North Brevard Economic Development Zone. And we've brought in a lot of new businesses into the area. We've helped bring some commercial space into our community. So we've still got job creation going pretty strongly. The overall state unemployment rate through this, I think it's like 11.4%. Brevard County, we're down to like 9.2%, and I think that's because of the work we've done with job creation. So that's still very, very important. Public safety right now is very important. Our community gets along, so I'm really proud of us. We've worked hard through these challenging times. We still have to work hard on infrastructure. We have stormwater issues up here. There's been a lot of neighborhoods that have gone into very wet areas. So we're working very hard trying to manage those stormwater situations that we're having to deal with. You know, the overall water level is starting to go up. And I think in the next 20 years, it's supposed to be almost two feet higher than now. So we're having to do a lot of strategic decisions now of how to keep the new projects going in in areas where they're not going to have flooding. So it's a lot of fun strategically. You've got to play with all these things and be ready. But I think job creation is still going to be the number-one thing we've got to do to keep people feeding their families.
Thank you. And the question again is, what is the biggest issue facing one?
To have gone into very wet areas.
Again, we apologize for the technical issues we're having. Dwight, we're actually hearing Commissioners, Commissioner Pritchett's answer on top of you, so we cannot hear what you're saying. There seems to be something going on with your question, perhaps?
One thing we've got to do.
And again, our apologies for this, for another technical hiccup. This has been...
God bless you.
The forum, so we definitely want to hear from both candidates, so thank you.
You're doing a great job. You're doing a great job.
She says she appreciates Florida Today for doing these live streams. Thank you for saying that. Good job. It's such a thing to do, especially with all these technical issues. Yes, Beverly, we're trying to solve these technical issues. Yes, Beverly worked. And we're still having terrible feedback. All right, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so we can hear you. There's no feedback. So I'm going to ask you, we'll discard that question again. And I actually, I'm going to ask you the question again, because I forgot what the question was for a minute. So the question was, what are the biggest issues in District One, and how would you address them?
COVID-19. There was no testing done up on this end of the county like it was down in Palm Bay. A lot of people didn't have the transportation, be able to go down. And when you need to have the type of testing, where the testing is done, and the result is in one to two days. Job creation, we're going to have to think outside the box. We brag about the North Brevard Economic Development Zone all the time. Most of those jobs, they say they're going to have 600 people. They bring 500 people with them, and that other 100 people are high-paying jobs. So at the end of the day, the local taxpayers are not seeing those jobs. Infrastructure. The commissioner says they're doing a great job with infrastructure. As I ride around, you can see most of the problem with the flooding is that up on District One, they're getting the same budget for Road and Bridge as District Four and Five, which has very few ditches and dirt roads. So the ditches are not being maintained, and the coverts are not being cleaned out, and the evidence is there to show it. So that's where the flooding problems are coming from in the Scottsmoor community. Like I said, I was just up there the other day for a few hours, and a lot of these things can be fixed with proper manpower.
All right, so I actually want to follow up on the issue of flooding. I've been doing some research for today's forum. I went on Mr. Seigler's website, and on it, you referred to West Cocoa drainage issues and flooding in some communities there. Mr. Seigler, you call for getting to the root of the problem. My question to both candidates is, what needs to happen to address that issue?
To get to the root of the problem, I believe we need to sit down seriously, take a serious look at where we're at and how we're going to fix it. And that means the commission is sitting down with Road and Bridge and everybody around the table, along with the communities who are having the problems, so that they can point out the issues that need to be addressed and not just send the crew out on their own, and they do a little cleaning. And then when it rains, if it's flooding like now, if it's flooding now, just imagine if a hurricane happens to come and slowly hang around on our coast for a couple of days dumping inches of water. We're going to have some serious problems. People are going to need... I saw a house the other day. Those people basically need a boat. The water is about three inches, three to four inches on the ground, all the way around the house. That's sad.
Thank you. Commissioner, and don't forget to unmute yourself. Are you muted? There you go.
Okay, there you go. When we start having these heavy rains, I've got a few areas in District One where we have severe flooding. I've got Wendover. I've got a lot of spots in Port St. John. I have some in Canaveral Groves. I do have some in West Cocoa, and they typically will let me know, and we'll get on the ball trying to solve a lot of them short-term. There's been some long-term things that we've been trying to accomplish in some areas. But some of the areas in such low area that as these water tables go up... But some of the areas in such low area, that as these water tables go up, it's getting harder and harder to try to figure out what to do. I want to correct something. We don't have the same amount of money we're spending in, in every district. I have 41% of the unincorporated. I get 41% of these funds. And we sit down continually and we try to get the strategic areas first, the ones that are in the worst shapes of, of trying to bring some money in there and try to fix some of these, these problems. Road and Bridge are wonderful. They, they put in a lot of good input. And I'm telling you, I hear from the community, when they come in, we sit down and we try to brainstorm and try to figure out what we can do, of what we can afford to do. A lot of these projects are very expensive, but we try to figure out how to move that stormwater along and get it out of the areas. If you just have a bad weather event, like we just got through, these heavy rains coming in, it's, it's hard for a few days to try to figure out what to do with all of that excess water. Hurricanes, again, they're hard too. But some of these areas are just in low areas and we're trying to figure out phases of how to move that water out of areas. We're not the only ones. They have the same problem in Merritt Island.
Thank you. Now let's talk about the budget. Local governments everywhere are bracing for budget shortfalls because of the coronavirus pandemic. What are your priorities in the budget and what should be on the chopping block first? And Commissioner, you, you go first.
Thank you. We, we just approved a budget. I tried to hold back all the pay increases this year to, to pause them till we know where we're going to land. And ma'am, I agree. I think we're going to see a substantial situation that we've got to be strategically ready for. When we went through the housing problem, the banking situation, I'm not sure county governments did, or the local governments did a good job being strategically ready for that or stopping the increases. So I really wanted to put a pause on the budget, even though we didn't have to do a tax increase and it was a decrease. I really wanted to put more money into the reserves. I was outvoted on that. They had good reasons why I get it. But I'm a little more conservative right now. I'd rather not do any new additions and kind of hold status quo at least for six months to see where we're about to land. I really think we're going to have an economic challenge moving ahead. But I'm, I'm really committed to try to keep Brevard County as little impacted with this unstable financial forecast that we have coming down. And I would really like to get a strategic plan going forward. We have a great community. We have a great future. So if we can keep creating jobs and keep stimulating the economy, it's going to help a lot. Again, our unemployment here is a lot less than the rest of the state and a lot of places in the nation because we've been doing a lot of these things for the past few years and I, I'm thankful for that. I think it's helped a lot.
Thank you. Mr. Siegler?
As you ride around Brevard County and pass by any county building, the lights are on 24 hours a day. Parking lots are lit up every night. If you have alarms in the buildings, cameras in the buildings, why do we have to have the parking lot lit up like we got a second and third shift? Why do we have to have the lights on in all of these buildings? So our power bill has to be outrageous. We can, the VA clinic there in Vieira, where I attend, they have shelters over their parking spots. What that is, those are, those are solar panels. Their facility is operating on the sun. So if Brevard County was to think outside of the box and move into solar, and now we would cut millions of dollars from our power bill and those dollars could be diverted into employee salaries and raises or maintenance in buildings and whatever else without having to ask the taxpayers for any more money. If we're not going to start thinking smart, then we need to move out of the way.
Thank you. And, and Commissioner, you actually, you, you brought up something that leads to my next question. You voted against giving county workers a 2.38% increase in October, a pay increase in October, saying that you wanted to wait a few months into the new budget year before supporting them. Commissioner John Tabia, who proposed the raises, said they should match what the commission approves for firefighters. Can you please just explain a little more about why you took that position? And then when, when it's Mr. Siegler's turn, I'll ask you to answer how you would have voted if you were on the commission at the time.
Yes, ma'am. I just, I just, I wanted to hold the funds for a while because again, I don't know where we're going to be. I think we, we have a economic problem a bit right now, but the stimulus funds have been pouring in. You know, the unemployment's been coming, the health with homes, we have this curious funding, but it's going to go away soon. And I, I, I just, I, my heart is, is heavy for where we're going to be at that point. And I don't want to see people not being able to take care of their families. And, and you know, if we have people right now in the, in the, in the private sector and they're, they're kind of on a pause, I thought it was smart to follow suit. And you know what? If everything ends up going in a, in a good direction, which I hope it does, then you know, if the funds are there, we can go ahead and distribute all those, those funds that we were planning on giving the employees. But I just, I was hoping to get a little pause. Everybody else didn't see the, um, the significance in that, which I totally respect their opinion. But that's, I thought it would have just been a smart play to do right now. I, I really, I'm a reserve girl. So that's where I kind of wanted to put them.
Thank you. Mr. Siegler?
I would have, I would, I would give the employees a raise and not a couple pennies in, on the dollar. But we have situations where a young lady works, been working with, within, in the Recreation Department that I spoke with, she's been there 25 years and she just got the $15. She's got children that have come through that program and, and even her children are going to work at places like Walmart and making more than she's making. And she's been on one job with the county government for 25 years. My God, you don't want to give them a, a 2% raise? What are we holding it for? It, it's ridiculous. These people, everything goes up and those people's salary is not moving. How do you expect them to make it? How can you sleep with yourself? By just holding this money coming in reserve? They don't, they're not looking at reserving. They're looking at how to pay the bills now. So we got to cut and find some ways to pay these people more money than this, these peanuts that we're paying them.
All right, thank you. So still talking about the economy, the Space Coast has gone to great lengths to attract businesses to our county and diversify our local economy. And that's especially a, a big issue for District One. Could you explain when economic incentives such as giving cash or tax abatements to certain companies should be used and when they shouldn't be used?
Let me just remark real quick before I move on. The county commission has given a 12% pay increase to our employees since I've been on the commission, which is, is a, is a pretty nice increase because they needed it. And again, I wasn't against giving a 2.38% increase. I just wanted to wait and give it retro if we found out we had money. Don't apologize that, for that, because I'd rather have people have jobs and have them to lay off if we find out we don't have a budget. We did that in the past and we had to lay off all kinds of government employees. And I'd rather have some income coming into my house than have none because I lost a job. And that, that's important to me. As far as Ms. Wrangler, I forgot your question. I think.
I'm going to, I'm going to start the question again. Actually, Mr. Siegler is going first on this one. I'll ask the question from the beginning. The Space Coast has gone to great lengths to attract businesses to our county and diversify our local economy. Could you explain economic incentives such as giving cash or tax abatements to certain companies should be used and when they should?
I think we should give incentives, but those jobs, if I understand the question correctly, those jobs, we need to bring in jobs that, that pay good. That, that means we're going to have to go out and do some homework. We're going to have to bring in jobs that's outside of the Kennedy Space Center. We can't continue to put all our eggs in one basket, space related. And we need to come up with jobs that's going to pay decent wages. For example, as we all know, things are changing. The whole world is changing. So we're moving into electric vehicles. I hear the Vice President even talking about electric cars. They're already on the road. Tesla's got them, Toyota's got them. In, in the future, that's where it's going to be. We need to be trying to be recruiting those type companies so that we can build batteries for electric vehicles. Charging stations got to be built. Five, 500,000 all over the country as, as far as the next president's concerned. So we need to be giving incentives to companies like that in the front end, getting ahead of the game to try to draw those type companies to come into North Brevard.
Thank you. Commissioner? And you're muted.
Yeah, I'm good. I think the incentives to get economic stimulus into the community is good. You have to do a return on investment perspective of it. Back maybe in the 60s and 70s, I heard this argument a lot. They didn't do it this way, but this ain't your daddy's economy. I mean, there is great competition going on right now to try to get these big industries into, into certain areas. And I've got to say, I think Linda Weatherman and the EDC's done a great job. When I travel around the country and I'm with Linda, maybe it's because I'm with her, they all tell me we have the best economic driver here in Brevard County. So we've really done a good job. Our, Brevard County went through growth at time periods where the rest of the state didn't. So we are getting the jobs in. We are starting to get companies in. We were able to compete. You have to have money to compete. And these incentives really helped. I'm a strong believer in clawback. So when we've given the incentives, if they weren't able to meet the job criteria, they had to give the money back. And as far as the abatement, same thing. They'd lose the abatements if they weren't able to do this. The majority of them were able to fill, fulfill their contract. And we have had a lot of new jobs come in this area. I don't know if you remember when we went through that crisis. One out of every three houses was vacant. Most of our families moved up north because there wasn't jobs. Well, they're all coming back. We are at that population and then some. So this is working. It might not be what everybody likes, but I think it's working. And it's better for the private sector maybe, but if the government has the ability to give incentives to stimulate the economy to where more tax dollars come in, I think it's good.
I forgot to unmute myself this time. And actually, we're about, we're approaching the end here. But I'm going to, I'm going to try to fit one more question. I'll give you actually a minute instead of answering because I always feel we have to talk about the Indian River Lagoon. So the question is simple. At the county commissioner, how would you work to continue improving the health of the Indian River Lagoon and address other environmental issues in Brevard? And Commissioner, you're going first. One minute instead of one minute and 20 seconds.
Well, we've put that plan into place. We're working real hard to quit putting bad stuff in. And we're also working real hard to get the bad stuff out. So this is going to take years. It's probably going to take longer than the 10 years that we've been doing it. But we've been trying to change the way we think. The important thing is going to be, is, is we're doing building, new construction is that we mandate that they're hooked to the sewer system or they're using that really high-end septic system, which is as good as the sewer from what Virginia tells me. And we want to limit how we're growing close to the lagoon. There's some things we can control. As far as the phosphorus in the soil, we can't. And it's always going to be a problem because it's very rampant here along our community. But I think we have to really concentrate on using the higher end septic tanks if people have to have them because they can't hook into the sewer or make sure we're adequately moved into the sewer. As far as the other rest of the environmental issues, we have to continue to protect the wetlands and still have smart growth. And I'm out of time.
Thank you. Mr. Siegler, your plan for the Indian River Lagoon?
I believe we need a task force to go and well, shut and cut the pipe from every municipality and Brevard County that's continually dumping sewage, raw sewage into the river. We can't use the river as a septic tank and then try to blame it on residential septic tanks. The cities are pumping sewage into the river. And they say they have a spill that's not on the ground and it's not in the air. That means it's in the water. If they, if they still have pipes that's running into the, to the river, how can you keep, keep telling us that they're not doing it? If they're not doing it, then let's remove those pipes from going into the river and let's get real with the people and stop playing games. We, we, we decided to tax ourselves a half cent sales tax on every dollar to clean up the river, but we, and the cities are still polluting it.
All right, thank you. So now let's move on to our closing statements. And Mr. Siegler, you go first.
I, I thank you all for, thank you for Florida Today and Florida Eastern State College and the League of Women Voters for this forum. I thank the, the listeners for coming on to, to hear what the current commissioner and the next commissioner has to say. I believe that I will make a better commissioner because I will listen. I will visit every community on a regular basis since I am a disabled vet, Army veteran that has time to go out and look at the problems with the people. We're not getting that now. We're not getting that kind of attention. So if you want to continue down the same road, you're going to get the same thing. So if you haven't seen any change in your, in your community as far as improvements in the past four years, then what do you expect to get in the next four years? If you say, if you put the same bad tires on the car, you're not going to get good knowledge. So therefore I'm asking you to give me the opportunity to represent you as the District One County Commissioner.
Commissioner Pritchett, your last thoughts?
I think that you have lived through probably the worst nightmare you've ever had to these programs. And you, you've been a real trooper. Thank you to Florida Today. Thank you to your staff out there working behind the scenes. Thank you to the Florida League of Women's Voters. I'd like to thank them as well. I want to thank my commission staff, Marshall Newell, Nate Smith, and Carol Masalina. Want to thank my husband. He's amazing. And I want to thank this great community. I have enjoyed serving this community the last four years as your county commissioner. I hope you give me the opportunity to do it longer. We have created great job growth. We have wonderful new housing going in. We've gone from a very depressed area to a very happy, hopeful area. And I just, I'm blessed to get to serve you here and I'm very thankful to my Lord for allowing me the opportunity to do so. And I just pray my community will stay blessed and prosper.
Thank you, candidates, and thank you viewers for sticking with us. And, and we had some technical difficulties, but we made it. We're able to hear Dwight Siegler much better. I also want to thank my producer, Rob Landers, behind the scenes. He saved us today. Again, this, this race will be on the November 3 election. Make sure you do your homework and make sure you vote and have a good evening.